We'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, September 23rd, 2024, at 5:30 in the afternoon. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez? Councilmember Santiness?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
I'm here.
Entertain a motion to excuse the absence of Victor Sanchez.
So move.
A second.
All right, so the motion made by Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez, supported by Councilmember Wendy Morris. For that objection, that'll be the order. Ryan, closed session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the council's going to recess to a closed session for item 3B. For item 3A, we're actually going to pull that item. And having said that, the attorney has one more item to add that came in last minute. Thank you.
I believe I have to recuse myself on 3A. I'm sorry.
3B, I think, is the one.
A has gone away.
Okay, so then...
3A is the one we're pulling. 3B is the one that I think Councilmember Morse has to recuse from.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do have a request to add a late-breaking item upon forfeits vote. We received on Friday a letter from the county council's office dated September 17th, 2024, with regard to our fire code, and it's labeled "City Bellflower's Unauthorized Fire Protection Services," a copy of which is on file with the city clerk's office. It requests, requests, a response by October 17th. In the light of the allegations in the letter, I thought it would be prudent to talk to the city council sooner rather than later. I'd ask that that item be added as anticipated litigation upon forfeits vote.
Okay. So that'll be Nom. C. Are we gonna...
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to go with the attorney's recommendations for future item C regarding the fire.
To add item 3C to the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so there's a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez. With that objection, that'll be the order.
We'll need a roll call.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Santiness?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
As your forfeits.
No, it's four fours.
Yeah. So Wendy's announced her conflict in public comments. There's no one in the audience to worry about that. So at this time, we're recessed to closed session. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, September 23rd, 2024, at 7:00 PM. We're returning from closed session where there are no reportable actions. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santiness?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here.
We'll have the invocation provided by Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, and the pledge of allegiance immediately following by Jim Diolonga, Director of Economic Development.
Please bow your heads. O gracious God, thank you for all you do. Please bless us all here tonight as you assist us in building a strong and caring community. May you lend us your wisdom and find solutions for issues before us. Please watch over all the fire areas and all the people that have losses, and be with them, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to help others, and the opportunity to try to improve the way of life. We ask for your protections and blessings on our military men and women, and may you always return them safely to their families. Amen.
Please face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, and join with me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. We'll now have our council announcements. The Parks and Recreation Department is offering an exciting volunteer job training program for young teens in the community. The LEED program, Leadership Excellence in Development, provides teens with guidance, clear expectations, and the tools to build life skills essential for leadership development. The city is seeking motivated volunteers eager to learn what it takes to be part of the Parks and Recreation Department. Applications are available in person, and you can find those at Carruthers Park, Thompson, at Sims Park, or online at www.bellflower.org. The application deadline is February, no, Friday, October 11th, 2024, by 4:00 in the afternoon. For more information, you can contact Michelle Hardy, and she can be found at mhardy@bellflower.org. Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder, the 26th Annual Bellflower Car Show will be taking place on Saturday, October 5th of this year, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Come and enjoy a great afternoon of family fun and see over 200 classic cars and trucks. There will be great food from local restaurants, food trucks, live music, and the entry is free to all and open to the public, of course. For more information, please visit the Bellflower Car Show event, and their website is www.bellflower-car-show.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Wendy Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Bellflower, in conjunction with the Lakewood Sheriff's Station, is giving away steering wheel lock devices for Hyundai and Kia owners while supplies last. The steering wheel locks were provided by Hyundai International to help to combat high-vehicle thefts of commonly stolen vehicles. Eligible vehicles include 2011 to 2022 Hyundai and Kia models with a key ignition. The free steering wheel lock giveaway is open to all residents. There is no pre-registration required. It is a first-come, first-served basis while supplies last. For more information, call the Bellflower Sheriff Substation at (562) 925-0124. Thank you, Mayor.
Don't you think the dealership should've gave them that lock before they sold the car?
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join its next monthly morning mingle, which is scheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, September 24th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at (562) 867-1744. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Attention, business owners and operators. Do you have something exciting to celebrate, like an award, a special event, or a recent remodel? Share your news with City's Economic Development Department at economic underscore D E V at bellflower.org to be featured in our Bellflower e-Citizen Newsletter. Our economic development staff also visit businesses to learn more about their products and services while building relationships with the business community. To request a business visit or to be featured in the monthly e-Citizen online newsletter, please call (562) 804-1424, extension 2249. That's all. Hi, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Sunny Sanzinez. At this time, we have a presentation, and this is, I'd like to invite crossing guard Alton Smith to the presentation riser to accept the Pedestrian Safety Month proclamation. All right, so it's Safety Month. We have with us one of our premier crossing guards in the City of Bellflower. We have a proclamation that we want to present. And it says here, "Pedestrian Safety Month. Walking is a healthy mode of travel, is environmentally friendly, and the City of Bellflower has embraced the principle that people should be able to safely circulate throughout the community without cars hitting them. Workability is a positive attribute for our community. A safe pedestrian environment can support economic development and local businesses. Drivers and pedestrians must work together to demonstrate safe behaviors on the road, helping to protect themselves and those around them. Therefore, I, Dan Coops, the Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2024, as Pedestrian Safety Month, and urge that all rededicate ourselves to enjoying the benefits of walking and ensuring the safety of pedestrians in our community." And it's signed by Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, Councilmember Wendy Morris, Councilmember Victor Sanchez, and Councilmember Sunny R. Santinez. So I want to make this presentation to you. We're going to picture, and then I'll hand you the mark, and you can say a few things. How's that sound? All right.
Standing on behalf of all city management services, it's an honor to accept this award because the work that I do really helps communities save lives. We have kids from 5 to 12 that I walk across the street every day, and people really don't pay attention a lot. So me being there helps the community, helps save lives and everything. So I'd like to say it was an honor and a privilege to accept this award.
All right. Thank you very much. Here you go. Thanks for being here. All right. Public comments, Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item, and you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
All right, I'd invite anybody forward. Mr. Letourneau, have you signed in and indicated on the registration your proper way to spell your name, so we'll put it in the minutes correctly?
Yes. Okay. Okay. I want to, one, thank very much the city council for attending the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce, that when we have our meetings on a monthly basis, that a lot of you are attending that show and support. So that's very, very good. I appreciate that very, very much. Also, I wanted to reach out and say a thank you to Sunny that has gave very good recommendation to the Bellflower Chamber on the type of business that I do, in the tax sale business. So if you ever are learning, if you ever want to learn how to buy these houses that we buy for $5,000, or get our 18% or 25% interest rate through the government safely, okay, let us know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Letourneau. Anybody else like to come forward and address the council? Now's your opportunity. Well, seeing none, we'll move on to 11A, Mr. Smoot.
That was a good segue.
Yeah.
Mr. Diolonga and his team are going to handle this one.
We're moving right ahead here. Don't drag your feet.
All right, Carl is going to give this presentation tonight.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, the city is conducting a public hearing to review and receive public comment on the fiscal year 2020, 2023, 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPER. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, requires a city to submit an annual CAPER which summarizes the activities and expenditures supported through the use of Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership CDBG funds are intended to improve living environments and promote economic development through job creation and services. The funds must assist low-income persons specifically in blighted areas. Last year, HUD allocated $866,001 in CDBG funds towards such activities. These activities include the Fair Housing Foundation, which provided their services to 198 Bellflower households; Kingdom Causes Good Soils Program, which employed 19 residents; the Volunteer Center, which served and benefited 1,367 persons. CDBG also partially funds the city's code enforcement activities, specifically in CDBG eligible tracks. Last year, there were over 1,000 code enforcement cases in these tracks. The majority of CDBG funds are used for Section 108 loan repayment. This loan was a 20-year, $7 million loan taken out in 2004 to rebuild blighted areas and promote economic development in the downtown area. The city is obligated to make annual payments using CDBG funds through 2024. The city also uses CDBG funds to pay for program administration and planning costs to ensure HUD regulations are met. And lastly, the city also allocated CDBG funds for a small business assistance program at Bellflower Center, which was carried over into this current fiscal year. In all, $1,151,604 of CDBG funds were expended last fiscal year. In addition to regular CDBG funds, the city also received supplemental CDBG CV coronavirus funds to prepare, prevent, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic during fiscal year 2020. Bellflower received two rounds of CV funding totaling $1,188,480. The city funded an emergency rental relief program, which assisted 42 Bellflower residents. In addition, CV funds were also allocated to food insecurity programs, including a homeless shelter meal program, which was able to assist over 100 persons with food, as well as a food insecurity program, which assisted 15 families with bi-weekly grocery pickup. The city has also allocated CV funds to a youth family senior services program. This program is currently underway, and we expect to complete it by the end of October Funds are also allocated for a new small business startup program. Additionally, the city used CDBG CV funds to pay for program administration. The city also receives home funds from HUD. Home is meant to retain and increase the affordable housing stock for renters and owners in the City of Bellflower. Last fiscal year, the city received a total of $401,503 in home funds. The home funds are allocated towards certain housing programs throughout the city. The first being the Housing Rehabilitation Program. A total of 11 rehabilitation projects were completed last fiscal year. Home funds are also used for program planning and administration costs. And lastly, under the home regulations, at least 15% of the home funds must be set aside for a project led by a community housing development organization, also known as a CHODO. The CHODO line item has been carried over to the next fiscal year in order to build up the CHODO project fund to make a meaningful contribution to an affordable housing project. A portion of the CHODO funds must be committed by year 2025. In total, approximately $322,459 was spent from the home funds last fiscal year. These are the primary accomplishments of the city's CDBG, CDBG CV, and home programs this past fiscal year. The CAPER has been available on the city's website from September 9th through today, and the public notice was duly published in the Los Cerritos newspaper. Following HUD's review and approval, the CAPER will be finalized and posted on the city's website. Our recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt resolution number 2455, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. That completes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much. That's very concise. Could you bring back about two or three slides before that current one? There, okay, so you got your CHODO project and then $2,089,000, and you said that will evaporate sometime during 2025?
A portion of it.
All right, how much?
It's $107,750.
So $107,000 will go away at the beginning of 2025, like three months from now, or at the end of 2025, or what portion of the year?
At the end of September, 2025.
We're required to spend that money by September of 2025, so the hope is that we'll have that CHODO project online, and that will just be a part of that contribution to the CHODO project.
What duress we were handling that under?
Right, so we've got some time. We've got one year left.
All right, let's go back another slide previous, another one. All right, right there, all right, item number four, homeless shelter meals. So we contributed $30,000 to the homeless shelter for meals, right? Now, we're going to approve a contractor, look at one, for another year of Mercy House working that homeless shelter for us. Am I to understand that they don't provide enough nutrition over there that we got to give $30,000? How do we do that?
This was done, this actually replaced the meal program that they were, it actually saved us money because we used our CDBG CV funds to pay the meal portion of the contract to the homeless shelter.
All right, so the contract reflects a lesser amount because we have this money contributed.
It did at that time. That was two years ago.
So is that, do we look forward to enjoying that again, or not?
We don't because right now, these were COVID funds, and we already did those. So this was from the COVID funds that we received from the federal government.
All right, those are my questions for now. Now, let's see what the council has.
So this program, it requires a lot of backup documentation due to the COVID. It's to prevent and to, you know, to assist during the COVID, and a lot of these public service agencies were not able to get us the backup documentation, so that's why we're still working with them to make sure they can go back and get it. We're hoping that we can spend another, possibly about $100,000 by the end of October of this year, October 2024.
Councilmember Morse, a lot of, we had about three or four of these public service nonprofit entities actually drop from the program because of the backup documentation that was required and the work, the intense work and labor that it would take to put that all together. So they didn't want to take that on, so we had three or four of them just drop right out. It is a significant amount of work to provide the backup for these.
And Councilmember Morse, if I can add to that, that's actually not just a thing that happened in Bellflower, it's everywhere, every city. I mean, in my experience with our nonprofit, we backed out of a lot of those types of grants because of that. It just wasn't effective, really. It almost cost you more money to hire someone or to staff someone and bring someone on board to be attending to that program itself and the grant funding request forms to manage it than it was to put the funds to work, if that makes sense.
Any other questions?
Not at the moment.
Mr. Dutton?
Yeah, no questions. I totally understand about the strings attached. I tried to fill a grant out once, and it's not worth it sometimes.
So when we have $350,000 left, because we spent $155,007 in the account, that goes back down to our bottom line, and we can reallocate that to wherever we want to go?
Yes, as long as it is...
As long as it's an approved item.
Oh, yes, approved.
But it can be reallocated.
Yes, it can be reallocated.
Okay.
We'll be coming back to the council at a future date, once we finalize the last couple of nonprofits, and we know what the total amount of money that we need to reallocate to come with some options for reallocating that money and spending it before the deadline.
Do you anticipate that the forms will be a little simpler to fill out?
No.
No, okay.
We're trying to, we're working with our consultant to try to find the past of least resistance to spend the rest of this money.
Okay. Victor, go ahead. Have you asked your questions and you say your question?
So the question I have, the first question I have on the deadline, when is the new deadline? Did it shift to use the funds?
No, it's still, I believe it's November of 2026 we have to use them by.
And does it have to be backdated?
I believe, yeah, it can be.
It can be, yeah. The, it's not the form itself, it is, that's difficult, right? It's the, like, the maintenance of it, or the having to install different softwares and higher up, and do you expend a bunch of different money that doesn't qualify for, you know, for the use of the funds?
Right. You spend a lot of money to get nothing back.
Exactly.
Sounds like you've been on the front lines on this.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
From the children's mental health side, yeah, we have.
Have any other questions while we have you?
No.
Okay. Mr. Sanzinez?
Mayor, Carl, a very good presentation. Just a follow-up on the unspent money. So in the previous slide, there is a $100,000, $150 for Business Assistance Program, right? Unspent? There you go, the number seven? And then if you add the CDBG or the CV for new small business startup program, another $100,000. So if you add those two, that's 250, quarter of a million dollars. So what are your plans to invest this money towards business in Bellflower?
So those funds were put to go toward the Bellflower Center, to open businesses, small businesses there. If this coming year we don't move forward with that, we're going to reallocate those funds.
Okay. Because we understand initially there were four applicants for the Bellflower Center, was it four?
There were supposed to be five.
Oh, five?
Yeah.
And now it's going to be down to three?
Or less.
Or less?
Or less. So we're waiting to find out the final outcome for what's going to be at the Bellflower Center, since they changed the format from food hall to basic inline stores, and now they're looking at getting regional or national chains in there instead of small mom-and-pop businesses.
Okay.
So we, part of this money is COVID money, the CV funds, which will be, if they don't get a business in, those monies will be brought back to you as part of the entire COVID reallocation of those CDBG COVID funds. So it'll go into that pot, but these funds here, this 150, which is from the regular CDBG funds, we'll have to at some point decide how to spend those, whether it's on small businesses throughout the city, or if we reallocate them as a whole with the rest of the CV, or the rest of the CDBG funds. or if we reallocate them as a whole with the rest of the CV, or the rest of the CDBG funds as part of next year's action plan.
Yeah, it seems like you're gonna have more money to divvy up.
There's a good chance we will, yes.
Most likely, because coming down from five grantees, so to speak, down to three or less.
Yeah, we might just have one if smoke and fire decides to still go in.
So I just want you, I just want you guys to be ready for that, it's gonna happen. And also, let me see here. In the, you showed this information on page seventeen of the staff report. Towards the bottom, it's the fiscal year 2023 distress calculations. I didn't see that in the, in the chart. Nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two. That's under the resources and investments. Page seventeen.
Page eleven.
Page eleven of the CAPER, and then page seventeen of the staff report. I didn't see that on the presentation.
No, it wasn't in the.
So what is that?
I've just learned about that from the housing consultant, so I, I'll get back to you on that one if I can.
It's the first time, it's the first time I came across also, so.
It's the first time I came across it this time, there was, yeah, there was something there going on, and I wanted to know more about it. And she gave me an explanation because apparently it's something that they don't touch, they haven't had to touch upon in years. And so we wanna know about it now.
Okay, all right.
And I'm not comfortable, you know, explaining.
I was hoping it's gonna be in your presentation here, but since.
Well, we'll make sure it's in future presentations for the following years, and we'll get back to you and put this in the weekly for you, so we can explain what that is.
Okay, fair enough. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All the questions been answered, and if so, we'll open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santianes, supported by Councilmember Wendy Morris. Without objection, that'll be the order. Does anyone like to come forward from the public and address the council as to what we're discussing about home-funded programs? Mr. Letourneau.
Yes, I have two questions, I guess. The first question I have is on the small business, I guess, grants that you were showing. And you says it was, it was allocated.
There's a hundred and fifty thousand there.
Right, a hundred and fifty thousand. So is that, is that eligible for all new businesses that start in the city of Bellflower? Or only in a certain area of Bellflower that the funds are being allocated to?
Do you want me to answer that question?
Sure. So, Mr. Letourneau, that, those funds were designated for the Bellfloor Center at the corner of Cedar and Bellflower. And as of right now, we're not sure if we're gonna be able to use them for that project, so they could get reallocated or respent in some other way in the future when we bring that back to the council.
So could it be allocated for new businesses, for like, new businesses that open up in, in Bellflower? Because that's how I.
That would, that would be a council decision to make, and we would do that based on council direction.
Okay.
We'll see what's left after they open that center, and then we can reallocate it, and we do Bellflower Boulevard or the whole city, but we'll keep informed.
Okay, and the other question is that you, on the homeless, I guess, it was a certain section that you had thirty thousand dollars allocated in a section, I couldn't remember.
No, that was the food I mentioned, the homeless shelter meals?
Yeah, okay, so you have a hundred and twelve, what is that, what is that, a hundred and twelve? Is that a hundred and twelve people? So we spent thirty thousand dollars for a hundred and twelve, a hundred and twelve people?
To eat for quite a while, that wasn't one meal.
Oh, okay, is that, okay, is that what it was? I mean, I, I don't, I don't know how long that.
No, it has to do with the timeframe of the money allocated.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you very much, okay.
Yeah, they went to the del re. Any other questions? All right, need to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Wendy Morris, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Without objection, that'll be the order. What do you think, guys? Wanna approve, disapprove? What do we got here? Crickets.
Okay, here, I'll help you out, Dan.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 24-55 with the addition of any public comments received, which we didn't receive none. That's it.
All right, so the motion, oh, wait, a second, do anybody like?
A second, a motion, oh, go ahead.
I'll second.
All right, so I have a motion by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Wendy Morris. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santianes?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, that took care of public hearings, twelve ordinances and resolutions, there are none. Item thirteen A.
I have a conflict.
Miss Morris has a conflict because she has property.
Property interest.
And.
Yes.
Owns a business nearby.
Yes.
So she'll be recusing herself from thirteen A. Mr. Smoot, you have a report for us?
Mr. Malana's gonna give this presentation for you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. In November 2020, the city completed significant enhancements to the Veterans Memorial at Library Garden. And at that time, the newly established Space Force was not included in the memorial's design, with the understanding that future modifications would be made to incorporate the newest branch. For the current budget cycle, twenty thousand dollars was allocated to use for conceptual designs in the form of a consultant for those future modifications. However, after some discussions, it was determined that the city can simply incorporate the Space Force into the memorial's award-winning design with minor modifications that do not disturb the overall appearance of the memorial. Currently, there are a total of six monuments dedicated to the five military branches and one to prisoners of war. Each monument features an embedded bronze seal on the exterior of its concrete base with the branch motto displayed in metal letters on the interior. Each monument also houses an individual flag and flagpole. For step one of the modification plan, the existing POW monument will be repurposed with the Space Force elements. That would include a newly fabricated seal, the motto, which is Simper Supra, meaning always above, and the flag for the Space Force. Step two of the modification plan would be for the existing POW flag to be relocated to fly directly beneath the US flag on the same flagpole. The state and city flags will remain on their respective flagpoles. And then step three for the modification plan would be to take the existing POW bronze seal and to make sure that stays preserved, and then embed that bronze seal in the grass area directly beneath the US and POW flag. And the, the picture on the right on your screen shows the, the six monuments, how they are now. The, the seal that I'm talking about, you'll see on the left picture there, that's the current POW seal. And then the relocation of where we wanna put that seal is on this picture. This gives you a perspective of the area I was talking about, the grass area that's just behind that middle pole right there in the center. That's the American flagpole currently. So that's the main one, and we would embed that seal in that general, general area. Should this plan be approved tonight, staff will immediately begin working closely with the Public Works Department to line up the necessary contractors for the work and complete the project. I want to clarify the twenty thousand dollars. So there, currently, right now, you approved twenty thousand dollars for designs. We have not used that yet. Again, we didn't want to impact after, we looked very closely at the design and everything. We didn't wanna use it. So that twenty thousand dollars has not been spent, and the implementation of the project should not be anywhere close to twenty thousand dollars. But what we're asking tonight is to repurpose those fundings to still go towards this, and then whatever we don't use will just remain in the general fund. So I wanted to clarify that, that piece of that. And with that, the staff recommendation this evening is to approve the proposed modification plan to incorporate the Space Force into the city's Veterans Memorial, and to authorize a budget transfer between the two accounts in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. And I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, PJ. That was very succinct. I didn't look at the calendar, I assume that we're having some sort of a veterans event there in November?
Yes, sir. We'll have our veterans event. It'll be, I believe it's scheduled for November seventh this year. Due to the, the timing and the fabrication that would take place for the new seal, this won't be complete by then. However, our intent would be to actually, if it's approved tonight, to be able to announce this at the state of the city, that we are gonna be adding it. And then for the event itself, I've, I've already started talking with Public Works. We may be able to have the flag portion piece figured out, and then we'll do some graphic design, temporary signage there, just to announce kind of the location where it's going to be for, for that event.
So have you purchased the flags yet for the Space Force?
No, we, I've talked to Public Works, I've asked them to purchase those.
Okay, so once you get that flag, and we put it up the standard, remove the POW flag, put it beneath the United States flag, that portion's completed until you do the fabrication of the bronze plaques.
Yes, that would be complete. I don't think the intent would be to leave it up like that, though, because we would probably do it just the day of the event, because otherwise, we're still gonna have that POW bronze seal down on the cement base. So it's gonna be, but yes, it'd be nice for the event.
If you get the flag before that event, then I think we've, I do get questions as to how Space Force is being recognized.
Yes.
But if we had it on a flag and standard, and we'll do the more complicated work soon thereafter.
Yes, either way, there will be a significant presence of the Space Force at this year's veterans event.
Perfect, all right. Mr. Santianes, any questions?
Just a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And I like the way you came up with this solution to the challenge. The way you said this, you recognize the six branches of the military, all in the same area, and at the same time, recognize and honor our POWs underneath the American flag. So I think that's the best place for that flag to be in. My question is, kind of minor question, would you transfer the whole twenty thousand dollars to the different account? Or because you're gonna be spending some money, I don't know the mechanics of that.
And I didn't either, this was the recommendation from Finance at the moment, would, would be to transfer it all. Again, I don't, I don't anticipate spending more than five, but I'm not the expert. What we're planning to spend money on is gonna be the fabrication of the seal, the letters, embedding, any installation piece of it. And then the, the biggest variable is any concrete repair that's gonna need to take place on that, on that one monument. I'm not an expert, and we don't have exact numbers yet, but I don't think we're gonna get close to that twenty dollar, but it is allocated already for just design.
You're probably spending at least five thousand dollars for that. So I'm just gonna check that with day to make sure that.
And I'd rather not have to come back to you, if it does go.
You transfer the whole thing, and then you, then you spend the five thousand in the old account then.
Right.
Another transfer's gonna happen later on, so.
Yeah, and the mechanism, I believe, was into the, the art fund in the form of a loan, I believe.
Councilmember Sanchez, you're effectively transferring from a planning fund to a construction.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
To the public art.
So not the expense account.
So in either case, regardless, any unspent funds remain in the general.
Okay, all right. And finally, have you kind of consulted with our veterans partners about this design?
Yes, I, I sent him a few different options, we were thinking for the orientation of the flags, and he said this was the best option for the POW to be directly.
Oh, great, okay, good.
So, yeah, I talked to him already.
Okay, you dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's, I guess.
Tried to.
All right, very good, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's well thought out. And you're obviously saving twenty thousand dollars, but you're doing the purpose of preserving and honoring all the branches. My one thought, and just on the location of the POW plaque, if you can go back to that photo real quick. Just wondering if, if.
You could put it on that wall?
If you could put it on that wall instead of on the grass.
I, I thought about that as well, and I think what we'll do is when I start working with Public Works, because I, I think the intention is for us to go back to the contractor that did this and see if they can do that and make it look nice right there on the wall. I, I agree, I think that, that could be a good spot.
Other than that, I think it's.
And we'll, we'll look at the size of it, and then how, what that process would be, and I don't think that would be too costly. So we can do that when we start looking at the other matters, so.
Perfect, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, yes, all right, Mr. Dutton.
Just for public's awareness, this project, well, Space Force came in two, in 2020, that's when it was designated. And this project was started two years prior to that, at least. Started with conceptions and budgeting money and design, and talking about a good resolution to come out. I had visions of Jack Cameron moving stuff around. This is a great idea to do what we did with the, you know, swapping out a flag and moving the other one.
Yeah, and I think when we originally discussed it amongst the City Council and myself, that was the plan, was we would, we would erect a completely new monument. And just after the reception we've got from the community, the, winning the award with the CPRS for the design, I didn't want to do that. So it, it just kinda thinking a little bit outside the box of how we could make it work. And it was the middle of COVID, remember, when we constructed this thing, so we were pushing that through.
Yeah, but good job. That's it.
And if, I, just in closing, what was mentioned by Mr. Sanchez, I don't want anybody to perceive that the POW MIAs are any less than what the rest of the monument is. And being in the grass is certainly fine, but even better to have it on that concrete wall. I mean, they need to be honored beyond what we ordinarily do for their sacrifice, and continue to sacrifice, you know.
I agree.
Or have, I mean, it's micromanaged, but rather like a block coming off at an angle, and so you're, you're not, you know, you hit, it's not on the wall. You don't see it as good, have it tilted, the runoff, the moisture comes off.
I want the public to see it and remember that we remembered.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at some different options for that. I, I agree.
That's what we have designers for.
Okay, thank you, PJ. Anybody in the audience like to make comments on our veterans memorial? All right, if we have no other questions, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve staff's modification plan to incorporate the Space Force into the city's veteran memorial at the Library Garden. And, I am reading this from the wrong place, I'm sorry. Where we at? Approve the, and authorize a budget transfer from zero one zero dash four two zero five four dash five zero zero to zero two zero dash four seven zero two two dash nine zero 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 in the amount of twenty thousand.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Victor Sanchez, supported by Councilmember Sunny Santianes. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santianes?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Moving right along to thirteen B, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
While Wendy rejoins the crowd here, let the record show that Councilmember Morris has rejoined the dyes.
Mr. Mayor, we have Travis and Timothy from Mercy House are gonna take this presentation for us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Item thirteen B before you deny it is to consider an amendment to the agreements with Mercy House Living Centers for Temporary Shelter Operator Services. And this is for the New Hope Shelter, which is located at eighty-eight thirty-three Cedar Street. The city first entered into an agreement with Mercy House in December nineteenth, twenty nineteen, and services began on May twentieth, twenty twenty, for temporary shelter services at New Hope. And the initial agreement expired May twentieth, twenty twenty-one, and then since then, it has been extended annually. This amendment number five proposes to extend the agreement for another year to allow Mercy House staff to continue providing temporary shelter services. And the agreement extension operate the shelter from October first, twenty twenty-four through. And the agreement extension to operate the shelter from October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025 will provide a not to exceed amount of And this is an approximate 3.3% increase from the previous contract year. I'm now going to turn it over to the Chief Program Officer of Mercy House, Timothy Nguyen, to give a brief update on the shelter.
Thank you for the introduction, Travis. My name is Timothy Nguyen, Chief Program Officer at Mercy House. Thank you to Mayor and council for giving us the opportunity to provide this service to, to the city of Bellflower. Just for some context, Mercy House is a nonprofit agency based in Southern California. We were founded in 1989, about 35 years ago, with a basic mission to serve the homeless, to alleviate the, the suffering and the, and the hardship that people experience in homelessness. We have a mission to restore to the homeless the dignity that, that they, that is stripped from them, right? The recognizing the humanity of every person and wanting to, to provide them a pathway out of that homelessness. To that end, we operate a whole system of, of care, including the shelter here in Bellflower. The shelter in New Hope is what we call a low barrier shelter. It's an emergency shelter that we want to invite the homeless into, right? We try not to keep them out. We want, we want to give as much access as possible to those who are in need and so they can come in, out of, out of your streets, out of your, your business doorways and into, into our care. And ultimately, the ideal is to get them out of our care and into their own housing. Here's some information about the shelter itself. It has 50 beds, 35 beds for men and 15 beds for women. We are an animal friendly shelter, so we do allow 10% of the population at any time to, to have a pet. We don't count service animals against the pet count. And so from time to time, we will have clients that have cats and dogs that are staying in the shelter. Again, part of our low barrier model, right? We know that people living on the streets, their animal may be their only family, right? They, they really care about those, those companions. And in order for them to come off the streets and into care, we, they need to take their animals with them. And so that, that's part of our philosophy, part of our mission is to, to give as much access as possible. This week, or actually, that's actually last week now from when I made this presentation, we had 43 individuals in the shelter, 28 men and 15 women. Forty-two of them are currently document ready in the coordinated entry system. That is kind of how the pub, public service, public resources are available to the homeless here in, in this geography, here in Bellflower. So our clients in the shelter are, one of our primary functions is to get them access to housing interventions which are available through LOSA and other, you know, public resources in order to get them the resources they need, whether that's rental assistance or deposit assistance or other housing navigation to get them out of the shelter and into housing. In the, our fiscal year last year, so we operate from July to June, we served 128 homeless people at the New Hope Shelter. Eighteen of them successfully transitioned out of the shelter to a positive outcome. So 14 of them into permanent housing, three of them into a long-term care facilities and one actually we were able to reunite them with friends or family. All of those we consider a positive exits from the shelter. Those are folks who ideally will leave homelessness behind them and move on to greater things. I will say since July 1st, so the beginning of fiscal year, we've already transitioned five clients successfully out of the shelter. So if we keep that pace, we will outperform last year, last year's 18. So I'm very hopeful about that. Here you can see kind of a breakdown of our staffing plan and budget. So Travis mentioned the $2.1 million for our annual budget. This is for 12 months of operations. It does include three meals a day for, for the 50 people that are there. And that, that is a rate of about $8.50 per person per day. That's for a hot meal as well as sack lunch and a cold breakfast. Some other of our expenses here that are kind of larger items are our security vendor. And so we do have 24-hour security vendor that provides a more additional layer of safety in the shelter. I think that also provides some level of comfort to the neighbors, the neighboring around the shelter. I will say, some of you may remember some of the contention around the initial siting of the site, but we, we have actively engaged in that neighborhood. We had a community advisory meetings for, I think, the first two years of operations. And we really have turned around the, the neighbor, the neighborhood and their perspective. I think they really see us as a partner, as an ally now. On average, per person per day, it's about $117 per client. And so that's including a clean and safe place for them to sleep, access to showers, three meals a day, and much needed case management services and referral services to, to other resources. And so for, for that $117 a day per person, we are really moving folks onward from, from their homelessness. I will say we work really hard to be good stewards of your city funds. Really appreciate the commitment that Bellflower has made to, to serving the homeless in Bellflower. And so in, in, in effort of good stewardship, we have reduced some of the staffing levels in the staff plan from previous years. And, and we've also made a change to safety coordinators to have some of our own in-house staff provide the oversight to the shelter, reducing the contract security footprint, which is also a cost-saving measure. Overall, the cost has increased year over year is about 3.3, which is in line with the 3.3%, which is in line with CPI over the last 12 months for the LA, Long Beach and Anaheim regions. You have any questions? I love to answer questions.
Could you put your graph back up again, please?
Yeah, of course.
So the, at the bottom there, bottom half, you have program supplies and client services, $84,000. Describe what that is.
Those program supplies are largely cleaning supplies. It's a paper, chemicals, kind of plates and cups, the, the, those types of things. That's probably about 80% of it. There is about five, five to $8,000 of kind of what we call a barrier fund. So often we get clients who have, they're ready to enter housing but for something small, right? They need a refrigerator because the, the unit they're going to move into doesn't pass HQS inspection. They made a, they need a pair of boots so they can go to work. So we want to be able to remove those barriers with some, some small, small financial cost.
How about clothing? Do you provide their outerwear?
Yeah, we do have a robust donations management there. The, a lot of the, the site, if, I mean, you've come to see that, you know, we keep a, we manage a lot of donations there. And so when our guests are in need for something, they're able to come and, you know, they go shopping in the kind of donation section and they're able to get, if they need, you know, a suit for an interview or, you know, a pair of shoes or something like that. If we have that, then we'll be able to provide that, absolutely.
I was calculating just now, your meals at 155. And if you divide that by 52 weeks in a year, it comes out to about $3,000 a week. You divide that by 50 people and that comes out to about $60 a day.
Is it? It should be about 850 a day per.
A week.
Okay, so you're talking.
So I, that's reasonable, you know. I don't know what you're serving, but I'm sure it's not filet mignon.
I'll say I, I can't personally eat for that much a day, but we have a caterer that we, that we partner with that they provide, I'll say nutritious meals to, to our clients. So one hot meal a day, again, sack lunch and a cold.
And as was mentioned earlier, we're providing $30,000 per year from our funding to augment what you have. Does that sound correct?
Yeah, that sounds correct.
The.
I'll, I'll speak to some of that. I know that our accounting team has been working really closely with yours to provide the necessary documentation backup.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. So Wendy, we'll start with you. Do you have any questions?
I actually wondered, do you have any current beds available?
We have seven male beds available. Male, yes. The 15 female beds are fully occupied.
Always keep, not always keep it, but is the female beds tend to always stay?
They do, they do, yeah. We work pretty closely with the, the public safety officers from the, what's it called? The, the Lake, the Lakewood substation. They're our primary referral source.
Is there a reason that there's only 15 bed female beds?
So when we, when we first cited and planned the project, we kind of based that, that proportion on what we experienced. Generally, we tend to find that there are a higher proportion of single males who are homeless over single females. Kind of two years into the operation. So we used to have a dorm that was a couples dormitory, but finding a need for male dorm, male beds, so we converted the couples dorm to just a males dorm. And so that's why the proportion is kind of a little heavier on, on men.
Will there ever be a time that you guys can look at it and see if there's maybe a need more for female beds?
Yeah, we're.
Over, take some of the male beds away?
Totally open to that, that discussion. The flexibility in, in assigning those beds. So we, we want to make sure that we can separate the, the different populations. And so we're limited to exactly how, you know, we have to turn all the beds on in one of the rooms or not. But we can definitely take, take a look at that.
And Councilmember Morris, Mercy House sends us a daily report as to the status of the shelter and both for the men and the women. On a regular basis, we're near or at capacity within the shelter. It's one of the conversations we've been having with Mercy House and with the county and with all of the other homeless providers and Kingdom Causes, all the other providers in the area to say, how can we address the bottleneck on the backend so that we can open up those beds on both the male and female side? That's part of the issue.
Those are my questions.
Mr. Dutton?
I think it's a previous one before this one. It's where we, it's maybe, yeah, there, there. So where are we at? So the 42 currently document ready in CES, is that identification, social security card, no warrants, kind of that, that they're clean, ready to go to work or housing?
Yes, that's correct. So the CES is the coordinated entry system here. It's part of LOSA's system of care. In order for our clients to get a, access to a program, a housing intervention program or a voucher, they have to be document ready and entered into the system. And so we've gotten 42 of the 43 clients that are currently in the shelter into that system and their documents in as well.
Would you have an estimate of how long those 42 have been there or what, what's the average to get, get that document?
To get the, so that's one of our first goals when they come in. So ideally, our benchmark is we want to get them in, into the system so that all of the data in within 24 hours. And then within 30 days, we want them document ready.
On 30, so somebody gets there and has no ID, no paperwork, no birth certificate, court issues.
That might take more than 30 days, but we have goals, right?
So an easy case is 30 days. A difficult case could be six months?
I mean, it depends. Sometimes we get folks who, you know, they were born out of state and so we have to coordinate with the courthouse or something like that and.
And Mr. Dutton, keep in mind, this is getting them document ready and into the CES. Basically, you're putting them on the list to receive whatever service it is they might need if it's housing, permanent supportive housing, whatever.
They can't even get on the list without this.
And then getting them to actually get that thing is a whole nother step. So to the problem that we've seen with our shelter is we have no problem getting folks into the shelter. It's where do we get them into the next step? That's why we've had the meetings that we've had with Mercy House, who has been fantastic in that process and sitting with us in the county to say, how do we find that next step? Whether it's creating permanent supportive housing in Bellflower on our own or partnered with the county or somehow how do we open up that next step so those 43 aren't sitting in that CES for, you know, two years at a time, waiting for whatever it is.
And then at this point in time, the other one that cost my eye was the average length of stay is 186 days. That seems a lot shorter than I remember a couple of years back.
So I will say that.
We've had people there for a couple of years, right?
That's correct.
So we're getting better at this.
We, we are getting better. We've made a really concerted effort in, in terms of our, our case management efforts. And we, we recently combined our, our leasing agent and navigation supervisor positions. We got a really talented person and I wanted to give them, wanted, want to promote them from within, into this role. And I think they, they really led the effort from our navigating team. I'll say kind of some kudos to, to your city manager as well to, to get us together with all of the relevant partners, with, with partners from LOSA, with partners from the county to have conversations around how can we get access for the people in this shelter to those county resources, to the, you know, the time limited interventions that are available. I think that's really going to move the needle for us as well.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Santines.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen, for your presentation. Can I call you, Timothy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. In this chart, it's, you're saying that there is 14 transitions successfully out of 128. That's about 14%. What's the national benchmark?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Can we find it out if we are kind of on par with the, or better or worse than the national benchmark?
Absolutely.
Because to me, it's 14 out of 28 is kind of, kind of low. Okay.
Well, I'll say of the 128, 50 of them are still in the shelter, still in the process.
Okay.
So I would compare the 14 to the.
Councilmember Santines, when we had our coordinated meeting with all of the county services as well, they expressed to us that actually they were seeing this as a fairly high success rate compared to other areas. So.
14%?
Yeah, 14 to 18% because I think last fiscal year it was 18%. It was 18 in total, so.
All right. So we're, we're, we're in a ballpark somehow. Okay.
Sounds like a C+, B-,.
C+? And, and can you go back to the next chart, please, forward? Okay. So in terms of security, are there any complaints, disturbance from within the clientele?
So there are always some concerns expressed from our clients. I will say that.
Is that called fighting?
I'm being diplomatic here.
No, he said concerns among the clients is what he said.
Disagreements or whatever. Are there any issues among, among the clients?
I, I'll say that there are always some, some, some clients who will, will cause some issues or concerns. I think that our, our security vendor, as well as our, our in-house staff are very good at, at being present on the floor and kind of, we want to separate those folks before any kind of disagreement or incident turns into something that needs us to call, call the sheriff's deputies.
So how many instances where there is some kind of physical altercation?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we do send our incident reports over to, to city staff.
Do we get that information too?
Yep. Anytime there is an incident, we get it immediately.
Okay. Has there been a spike compared to last year? Or how, how does it compare, compared to last year?
I don't know number wise how it compares. I can tell you anecdotally, I see them periodically, but not often.
Okay.
We could put that together for, if that's.
All right. And it's concerned. And so on, in that vein, how many security staff do you have?
So we have, we, so we contract for security and they have one guard on at all times. So there's three shifts a day. So there's three, three guards that we contract for on any given day. And they're not our employees, so I don't, I don't manage how they, how many staff they have to rotate that out. But we know there's always one contract security guard at all times.
If I didn't remember correctly, you have, you used to have one guard outside.
Yes. So we, we also still have our, we have what we call safety coordinators, which are our employees.
Okay.
And they're also doing kind of safety work. So they're not security guards, like they're, they're not contract security guys, but their, their role is to provide a physical presence in the shelter space and to, to provide that oversight and, and intervention in, into those conflicts before they develop into incidents.
Okay.
So the, the security guard themselves, the main station is at the front of the entry. So they're doing access control and they also, they monitor the front gate. So they're, they're monitoring the, the driveway gate as well as the front access gate for, for the man, the man gate up to the front. And they do, they will do, once an hour, they'll do a, a, a site walk.
Oh, I see. So in that line of security in your budget, how many people are in there?
That is the three guards 24 hours.
Three guards?
One guard 24 hours. It's three guards per day. Yeah, three shifts.
How, how about the driver that takes them, that drives the van to take them to the nearest bus stop?
That's our driver.
That's your driver? Not the security?
That's not security.
Okay. All right. That's good. And then how do you promote donations for the shelter?
So we have a whole development department that does donor, donor management and, and events. So if you would like to donate, you can find a QR code on our website. Happy to share that.
Okay. Do we have it in the website? It's a question of our staff. Do we have that, something about donating to the shelter?
We don't, but it's something that we could add.
Can we add something to that? Maybe that can help too. Okay. And then one more question about this staff report here, I mean, your report here on page eight. It says total number of shelter bed nights provided year to date, 28,575. I'm very curious about that, 28,575.
So every night where a person spends in the shelter, that would be a shelter, a shelter bed night?
Okay.
And so that is, that's a number that our team pulls from the HMS record, just the counting the nights where every person is enrolled.
Yeah, but just simple math, there's only 365 days in a year. There's 50 beds. That's less than 20,000 bed nights. So when I was reading this, I was questioning myself, how can they come up with 28,000?
That might be an error from, from our, from our data team. I'll certainly look into that. I'll certainly look into that, yes.
Okay, because you're, you're going to be Superman if you can provide twenty-eight thousand five seventy-five bed nights out of fifty beds times three sixty-five. That's less than twenty thousand.
You've got three times that amount, shouldn't it?
Yeah, that's, um-
That's pretty good.
Fifty times three sixty-five, that's only eighteen thousand. So, that is a challenge. I'll have to take a look at, I'll ask that. It's probably, they may have pulled the wrong date range.
You almost impressed me there.
Yeah, that's a, we're certainly not doubling them up, so.
Because I was thinking, oh, are they have, what do they call this, double deck over there?
Pets.
No, they're not counting pets.
I don't think we're counting the pets.
I was listening to his presentation, they're not counting pet nights. All right, Timothy, thank you so much.
Of course, thank you.
So, any other-
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate your questions. Of course, you always figure the math out. Have you, not any of our clients become deceased while in your care? Because that doesn't show up there, they're checking out a different way as to, everybody comes in, goes out and standing up? That's what I, the graph would show.
I will say, part of the nature of serving the population that we do is, from time to time, we do have guests that pass away in our care.
Shouldn't that be part of the equation?
I think, it, it is certainly something we report on. In my memory, I don't remember someone passing away in this shelter over the last year.
But you have had them previous years.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that would be accounted for under the negative exits.
That, I think we'd have it as neutral.
Well, an exit's an, an exit's an exit, isn't it?
Well, you have, but it's got to go in one of the categories, and that category is not provided.
If they didn't pass in the facility, but if an ambulance was called, then they went to the hospital, but that is a part of it. So, they do have where they've exited to, whatever, I don't remember the exact word, but you had it where you, they exited to care facilities or something.
That should be a positive exit, because they, they're not homeless anymore.
No, they went to a hospital, and maybe a long-term care facility.
Sometimes you have a client exit to hospice care or something like that.
Just on a general basis, you haven't had any deaths in the past year, is that?
I, I don't remember a death at New Hope in the last year.
I'm certain that you would remember them, I mean, you, you know how many dogs-
Long day.
You would know. How long have you had charge of this facility?
Since it opened.
All right. So, are you the gentleman that always comes forward and gives the report?
I am.
You know, this was much better than your previous reports.
Thank you.
I thought, I thought it was a different guy. You, you know the answers to the questions, it's kind of cool. So, I'm proud of you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And you couldn't answer Sonny's stuff, but that's okay.
Well, he's not the mayor, don't matter.
Right. But I'm giving you an A-plus on your presentation and answering the questions. You're very, very good.
Thank you. That's way better than C-plus, B-plus.
We may not approve it. However, we're going to deny the permit, but we're going to pay love.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not done yet.
All right, oh, excuse me.
I haven't had a, ask my question.
Well, now the hard ones.
No, I'm not about that.
Because he knows his business.
Can I, can we go back to the previous slide? On the average length of stay, so, you know, my colleagues touched on this a little bit. We talk about the being CES-ready, and that, that, that's the first step really into, well, that's one of the initial, early-stage steps to getting them into a position where they can be self-sustaining hopefully one day, right? What is stopping or slowing this number down, from your standpoint, from getting those forty-two people out into the next step? And what, what, what should we be looking at?
I'll, I'll answer that question in two ways. One is firstly, I think, is a housing crisis. There's not enough affordable housing for the, for our clients to go to. If our clients, even, some of our clients may work full-time, if they make twenty bucks an hour working forty hours a week, that's hardly enough for them to rent something on their own. So, the finding units, you know, that means they have to find an SRO, they have to find, you know, a room for rent or something like that. Especially with their context, they have to find a willing landlord to rent to them, and that is a big challenge. So, the availability of housing is, is a big part of, of that delay. The second major part of that is the availability of permanent supportive housing. A significant portion of our clients are what we call chronically homeless, so living with disability, they've been homeless for a very long time. It's difficult to expect someone with that context to gain employment and save up a lot of money and move into, you know, on their own. They, they, they are in need of a voucher, they're in need of additional services and care, and that resource is very limited. And when, even the amount of those resources that are out there in, in this county don't get necessarily allocated to the SPA.
Right. And on that note, for those fundings to be accessible, they have to enter the next stage, right, of, which would be supportive care or permanent supportive housing. So, there's plenty of funding out there for that, but we can't get, we don't get those funding yet until they get it placed into that housing.
Yeah, so they would get matched to that through the, through the CES process.
Okay. And how many out of those forty-two are working full-time jobs and just can't afford their own place?
I'll have to look into the specific on that.
But you, you, you mentioned, you mentioned that, so I'm curious to know more about that.
I'll say, anecdotally, I was checking my emails, waiting here, and we had a success story this morning from, from the New Hope Shelter of a client, actually, one of our long-stairs. He came out of the riverbed with his cat, Simba. If you've, you've been to the shelter, you may have seen the, the cat.
Yeah.
He's one of the few cats that we have there. He was one of, I think he was there from, for, for three years at least, he's one of our longer clients. But he did get employed, and he has been saving his money, and actually, this morning, I got, I got the email from our staff that he, he moved in, he found an SRO and moved into downtown LA. So, it does happen.
Okay. If we clear these numbers, if there's a way to find these numbers to be cleared and move on to the next stage, how many people, let me rephrase that, how many people are being turned down on a daily basis from the people that are in our streets right now?
In Bellflower.
In Bellflower, that could go into these houses, I guess, into the shelter.
Into the shelter. We'd have to check with probably the sheriff's substation on-
Yeah, that'd be, I mean, that's a stat we've got to look at. I mean, we know the need is there, but at the end of the day, how many people are we turning down on a given point?
Seeing those daily reports, we fluctuate anywhere from forty-seven to fifty people, I mean, give or take, of course. But there, we have very few vacancies in the, in the shelter here on a given basis, so you're kind of hitting the nail on the head. What's the bottleneck on the back end? The challenge is not getting people into the shelter, although there are some that are challenged, challenging. The challenge is, what's that next piece? That's why we had the coordination meeting we did, because there's plenty of funding out there for folks that are willing to build permanent supportive housing. And just as we have in the past, our argument has been to the county, if you're not going to assist us in doing this, we're perfectly willing to go do it ourselves and find a way to do it. Give us the tools to do that. So, that's the, that's the challenge at this point, is figuring out how we can get those projects together, which I know Jim's team is already working on a couple of those, and there may be some other funding opportunities that we can look at to go do those kinds of projects and say, we're willing to do it here in Bellflower in the way that we know is working.
Very good. I think that helps bottom line on both ends, right?
No, you saw the two million dollars that was up there from Chota Funds?
Right.
And I discussed how long will we have that money? Those could be used for supportive housing.
For supportive housing, yeah. Okay, no, that's good. And then, related to access, from the bus driver's perspective, are you having any issues utilizing the back access with Edison, or are you still using that?
We are, we are still using that, the Edison right-of-way for our show.
So, you're still entering from Ramona?
We enter off of Cedar.
Off of Cedar?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, from the, sorry, yeah, from Cedar. Okay, good. Have there been any other complaints, anything? I know we haven't had a community advisory meeting in a minute, or in a while.
Yeah. No, none?
No.
Not from the neighborhood?
No, not at all.
That's good.
Okay, that's good to hear. Very good.
The first meeting didn't go that well.
No, it did not.
So, I'm glad that you're placating them.
All right, very good. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Timothy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right. Anybody want to come forward and give any testimony on this item? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve this contract.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the manager to execute agreement number five, amendment number five to agreement file number eight-five-three, in the form of the city attorney.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santines, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Please pull the council.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santines?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
You're all set, Timothy.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good presentation.
Yes. All right, we're moving on to the consent calendar. Item fourteen, does anyone have any conflicts on the consent calendar items?
I have a conflict with fourteen F and fourteen G, both are property conflicts, property interest.
Okay, F and G?
F and G.
Okay, anybody else have any conflicts they want to report? Seeing none, we'll move on to, anybody like to pull into the items for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item fourteen H.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I believe there is one more conflict, fourteen I.
And fourteen I'er, I, we're going to put aside, aren't we?
This is the protest hearing, yes, I think that item is getting continued.
Weren't we going to extend that to another meeting?
I think the recommendation on that one is continuing the item, so just you need to recuse if it's a continuation.
That's the one I'm recusing on, but I didn't think we were going to discuss it.
You're not discussing it. Just for the record, you're conflicted on the overall substantive issue, the actual moving it, you don't have a conflict on, so.
Right.
There you go.
What does that mean?
Means it's continued.
You're staying.
You're good, you're good.
I thought I was until-
I thought I had a conductive meeting after you said that, but I can't help you.
Well, I lost all the confidence after my response.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
But fourteen I is not going to come up, but we're not going to vote on it tonight.
There is no apparent conflict with the recommended action on that item for this evening. Kicking the can down the road.
Yeah. All right, so Victor-
Victor pulled something.
Yeah, Victor H.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just, if I can get a quick summary from our finance director on what, what we're doing here with fourteen H?
I'm so glad you asked.
Roughly, there are three sets of items. First grouping, those are cleanup budget adjustments, cleanup budget adjustments based on actual revenues and expenditures, as well as revised estimated revenues and expenditures. And then, the second set is budget adjustments to align the budget with approved grant funding. And then, the last item is budget adjustment to increase the funding for employee recognition programs in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. This comes to you as a recommendation from the BEAT Committee, is an employee committee from all the departments that participate in this, every single department participates in this. So, going to the first group, the budget adjustments to align the budget with actual revenues and expenditures or revised estimates. First item is public facilities fund. If you go to the detail, which is Exhibit A, page six, at the bottom right-hand side, there's all the details. So, the public, if you look at the adjustment column, which is third column from the right, public facility fees, we collected nine thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars more during the fiscal year, so we want to amend the budget for that. Insurance, that'll give us more money to fund or use public facilities fees to fund public works, our office renovation by thirteen thousand three hundred forty-four dollars. The difference is interest earnings. The next group of budget amendments relate to temporary shelter services. First line item is legal services. We didn't budget for it adequately during the fiscal year, there was condemnation proceedings that the city attorney's office worked on, so we needed additional funding of thirty-five thousand seven hundred eighty dollars to align the budget with the actual expenditures. The other one is rent. During the fiscal year, we determined the fair market value of rent, which was higher than what we were paying, or anticipated to pay, by fourteen thousand seven sixty-eight, so that budget increase relates to that. Third item is contract services. Contract services relate to Mercy House Services. Those are funded by two different, two different funding sources. O-one-O is general, general fund, O-three-O is grant funds. Based on, based on the state's funding being lower than what we anticipated, actually is lower by fifty percent, and also the state, it turns out that they shifted the funding, delayed the funding by one fiscal year. So, we have to reshuffle the funding between general fund and grant funding. And city manager's office also identify additional, or apply for additional grant funding through LA County, and receive nine hundred sixty-three thousand dollars through LA County office. So, fortunately, that makes up for the state's funding cut or funding reduction, as well as funding delay, but we're still short about three hundred fifty thousand, which will have to be paid out of the general fund. So, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we're providing seventy-five thousand dollars for legal services in connection with the condemnation proceedings, rent revenue, whatever we're paying now, multiplied by twelve months, which is a fair market value, and then contract services based on what you approved this evening. But it still has about a hundred thousand dollar excess, but because of the condemnation proceedings, we like to keep the hundred thousand dollars as some cushion. Next set, budget amendments pertain to city council budget amendment. Last fiscal year, there was, I guess, I don't know how to quite put it, new council member. The former council member was a retired cow person, new tenant. If you hire a cow person, new tenant, then the cost is lower, because you don't have to pay into purse, or so you don't have to pay medical benefit, you pay medical up that, which is, which can be half the cost. So, because of that, with, and there are other, like, meeting, the council was more active with conferences, and then also there are other supplies and stuff. We, we needed to increase the budget by twenty thousand five hundred. And then, by the same token, in this fiscal year, with the council's salary increase, as well as aligning other cost increases, we experienced, experienced last fiscal year, we bumped up some of the accounts, and in total, we, we estimate about forty thousand six hundred dollars that we need for this fiscal year. Next three items pertain to parking district funding. Parking district property assessment was higher by eleven thousand three hundred twenty dollars, so we're adjusting for that. And then, the, the budget for the, actually, let me take it back. Parking district expenses were higher by twenty-three thousand dollars, and to pay for that, we're increasing the transfer from the general fund by eleven thousand six hundred we're increasing the transfer from the general fund by eleven thousand six hundred eighty dollars. And then the balance, eleven thousand three hundred twenty dollars is coming from higher than anticipated property tax assessment from the parking district. And then the last item from that group is the debt service fund, uh, the principal and principal and M T B note payable. When, whenever we collect, um, lease payment that is higher than what was the base amount, we have to pay down the debt. Our collection was higher, actual collection was higher by three hundred nineteen dollars than what we anticipated, so we had to pay that out and also increase the budget by that small amount. Next item is, uh, Long Beach Transit subsidy, uh, we received letter recently saying that our contribution requirement, um, for Bellflower residents to Long Beach Transit is, uh, higher, just, uh, there's a increased ridership, I presume. So, uh, we budgeted thirty-eight thousand seven hundred twenty dollars, but we need twenty-four thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars more. Next item is city clerk's election language translations, we need nineteen thousand dollars more because, cause we're required by law to add eight additional languages, languages, um, for the translation services. And going to next page, um, organic waste recycling grant, we budgeted the program for two hundred seven thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars, but we didn't budget the matching revenue, so we're doing this now. And then the following item is economic development department. Received funding from S B A, um, in the amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, so we're budgeting the revenue and, and the budget, expenditure budget. And then next item is the one that you had already approved, um, but we didn't budget for, which is, uh, U S D A Urban Enforcement Management Plan grant in the amount of one million dollars, hundred thousand dollars is for the plan. Uh, the balance nine hundred thousand dollars is to plant five hundred new trees as well as maintaining them. And then, and then the last item is, uh, the one that I briefly discussed, um.
I could take that one, Tay, if you want. This is a recommendation from me essentially through our Bellflower employee engagement team, you have a couple of things happening in this account. You normally budget for employee engagement, employee recognition, um, this includes things like your, uh, service awards for those employees that have been here for a particular period of time, every five years they get a certain amount for their long-term service. In that account, you had twenty-seven thousand dollars, a significant portion of that, it just happens to be that this year we have a large number of employees who are hitting those service award milestones, so a large portion of that was taken up, which didn't leave what we would want for some of those regular employee events that we have, so we're backfilling a little bit of that. In addition to that, um, as I've told you guys, I've gone out to our employees and given them a, a challenge in this. I want a, a couple of things, number one, to bring our employees together, I want the, that BEAT team to plan out some of those events and some of those smaller things that we do on a regular basis to get our employees together and working cohesively. And in addition to that, I want them to go out to the departments and ask them, ask the employees, what are some training programs that they might be interested in doing to im- improve the services that we provide to the community and at the same time improve themselves so that they're more ready to take opportunities within our organization to promote when they have a chance to do that. How can we get those employees ready to promote from within, uh, instead of always having to go outside and find those employees? So, I've asked for a little bit of funding to do that, this is all. Um, I gave the charge to the Bellflower employee engagement team, they came up with some numbers, we worked them in and worked back and forth, and this is what we've come to in that. So, that's where that's coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Tay, thank you, thank you for that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So are you ready to give us a good report as to how our, financially, we're doing in the city of Bellflower?
Right.
These adjustments, are we okay?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, um.
You can embellish that if you'd like.
Yeah, at the request of city manager, I did a, we did a projection and, and it was a large surplus. And we just, we're very close to closing the books, uh, we have, we're expecting eleven point six million dollar surplus in the general fund. So this is our fourth consecutive year of, like, excellent general fund performance.
Thank you. All right, is, uh, any other questions on the consent calendar, otherwise looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, got a motion by Victor Sanchez, anybody wanna support the motion for the consent calendar?
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, all right, you're not going out on a limb here.
You may just die.
All right, we have a, a motion by Councilmember Victor Sanchez, supported by Councilmember Sunny Santianes.
And we're not voting on I, right?
And we're not voting on I because that's been pulled back.
No, we're voting.
Excuse me.
The receiving files.
Yes, we will need a vote on I to continue that item to the next meeting, that's the recommendation in the staff report, and that's what I asked.
So do you want me to back off the consent calendar approval, or do you wanna?
Nope, we can do the consent calendar approval as it is altogether.
All right, but the I will not be included in that.
The I is included because the recommendation in the staff report is simply to continue the item.
All right, so, uh, we got a motion, we got a second, ready to pull the council.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santianes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Moving to council reports, Miss Wendy Morris, please.
I have nothing.
Tell us what you did on Sunday.
Sorry, my, my days are blending, um.
We dined with the Catholics, remember?
Oh, we went to Saint Bernard's Church. But we didn't get to play bingo. But we had a good time, though, the, the Saint Bernard's Church, the, the festival's really, it's a.
A great event.
A great event, and they had, um, a lot of really good food. So, yeah, that was what I did.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem?
I really liked Tay's financial outlook on the city of Bellflower. And, uh, you're always, uh, a little conservative to, uh, over anticipate how well we're doing. And you need to have a little more emotion in it, like a little more happiness.
He's got a poker face.
Thank you for doing that fine finance work, Tay, it, uh, it shows. And, uh, we really appreciate what you do, thank you.
And what Ray's saying, Sunny and I and Ray have been here when it was all parentheses. And we've come away from that now, so. Victor doesn't remember that, he wasn't on council that time as resident, he maybe felt it, but he didn't know it. All right, uh, Mr. Sanchez, what would you have a report on tonight?
Yeah, I think, you know, Tay, thank you for that summary, we don't get to hear from you often, but, uh, it's always nice when you come with those good numbers. Um, just wanna say, um, uh, thank you for, uh, the recuse, or excuse me, on the last, uh, special meeting, I was unavailable for, due to work, so, just wanna say thank you.
All right.
That's it.
Mr. Sandy, Santianes?
Thank you, Mayor, again, I want to thank you and Councilmember Morse for coming out to the Saint Bernard's Festival, and I wanna congratulate the parishioners, it was very successful, starting Friday through Sunday. And also I want, again, to congratulate the owners of Legal Inc., uh, new business on Bellflower Boulevard. Uh, we had a nice ribbon-cutting ceremony last week, uh, it was well-attended, so welcome to the seat of Bellflower, so, thank you.
You know, I was so naive to think that was a tattoo parlor, I didn't know what Legal Inc. was, but I was set straight when I got there, so. So, uh, we've got, you know, ordinarily, I announce those that have passed on, but tonight I have got a joyful thing, cause we're gonna adjourn our, in honor, the birth of Maude Eloise Santianes. Congratulations are in order for the proud grandparents, Councilmember Santianes and his wife Irma, on the birth of their first grandchild, Maude Eloise Santianes. Maude Eloise was born on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven fifty-eight P.M. in the evening, to Mark and Sophia Santianes. She weighed in at a maximum weight of nine pounds, six point six ounces, and was four feet long, but no, it's. Twenty point eight inches long. Maude Eloise is Mark and Sof- Sophia's first baby, and all are doing well, and I guess we can report the same today. Congratulations to the Santianes family on the birth of Maude Eloise Santianes, congratulations. So with that, we're gonna adjourn our meeting to the next meeting at the regular Bellflower City Council meeting at five-thirty P.M. On Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, it is, uh, what time is it? Eight thirty-five, huh? We adjourn.